For joining us today, September 21st, 2024. My name is Adriola Schola-Momo, a volunteer and member of the League of Women Voters Oakland. Our chapter, along with all chapters in Alameda County, are pleased to have as partners today: AAUW Oakland Piedmont Branch, Alameda County Bar Association, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Asian Immigrant Women's Advocates, Center for Elder Independence, Central Legal de Raza, East Bay Housing Association, National Coalition of 100 Black Women, Oakland Violence Prevention Coalition, Piedmont Pines Neighborhood Association, and SPUR. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in issue advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues or ballot measures. This forum is presented by the education arm of the League, which does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties, nor take positions on issues or ballot measures. Yeah. Next page. All righty, before I introduce our two amazing candidates, I have a few logistical items to review. The candidates and our community partners have all agreed to participate under the guidelines set forth by this forum. The candidate forums are today are being televised on KTOP, Oakland's cable access station, and livestreamed on the city's website, oaklandca.gov/oaakmtg. The forums are being recorded and can be viewed later on the League of Women Voters Oakland website or our YouTube channel. Recording of this event is owned by the League of Women Voters of Oakland, therefore you can't record this event. You can take photos, though. We are hosting in-person candidate forums for the 13 Oakland races over two Saturdays, today and again on Saturday, October 5th. We are presenting eight sessions today. This is our last one, and the remaining five will be on Saturday, October 5th, here in City Hall. The full schedule can be found on a poster outside the door or on our website, lvwocla.org/decide. All right. This session is for the position of Oakland Unified School District School Board Member, District 3. There are five, not three, not three people. We're not in West. All right. There are two candidates running for this position. They are, oh, that's why. They are Patrice Berry and Sasha Rizzi Hernandez. Welcome you both. All right. Here is our process for this forum. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for opening remarks, and the speaking order has been randomly assigned. Candidates, you will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question. If there is a lightning round, those questions will be loaded into yes or no only. No, it depends. Please keep an eye on the timekeeper, who will signal with different colors marking the 32nd remaining and stop. As a moderator, I will verbally give you these prompts as well. Mainly, I'll say, "Thank you," and that means, "Stop talking right now." There will be no separate rebuttals. However, candidates may choose to use some or all of their one and a half minutes to rebut the response given by another candidate. The following questions, following the questions, each candidate will have a minute for their closing statement, going in the reverse order. Questions for this forum have been prepared for in advance by the League of Women Voters and our partners. And, audience, you can also submit questions by just raising your hand, and one of the League of Women Voters members will hand you an index card. All righty. Before we begin, in order to be heard on KTOP's broadcast, you'll need to press, you'll need to press the button right here, turn your mic on, it'll turn red, and when you're done speaking, make sure to turn it off, so you don't have a hot mic moment. All righty. All right. Now we're ready to begin, and you can get a break from my voice. We'll begin with our first candidate, who won the coin toss. Sasha, you have one and a half minutes to introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sasha Rizzi Hernandez. My pronouns are she, they, and I'm running for Oakland School Board, District 5. There's a very particular reason why I decided to run for office, and that is that I will be able to bring a very unique experience of both being educated here in Oakland, but also devoting my professional life to education here in Oakland specifically. So I came to the United States when I was 12 as a non-housed, undocumented, English-language learner, and that very particular experience taught me what I needed to know about family engagement and how important it was for me to continue to fight for my family to have access to information in regards to my education. Over the years, I've also led important campaigns related to literacy and math in schools like Madison Park Academy and Reach Academy. I've also been supportive of the representation of Black students by holding conversations about anti-Blackness in different communities. So I believe that after many years of working to advocate and support families to create important resolutions, and they have passed, we haven't had the full implementation, and that is the reason why we need someone who understands the landscape of Oakland, the political crisis and economic crisis that we're in, that also has the experience of being in Oakland classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrice?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. My name is Patrice Berry. I am the proud daughter and granddaughter of union workers of two military veterans, and I myself am the happy mother of two beautiful children, and like most parents, I want my children to have the very best education. And I've actually worked my entire career to give that to all kids across the country. I'm a career-long educator, and that gift was instilled in me by watching my parents serve our community every day. I've taught, I've developed programs that have led to dramatic improvements in reading, in math, post-secondary readiness, student and educator well-being. I founded organizations right here in Oakland that are still thriving and serving thousands of students and families, and my work has even catalyzed statewide policy reform. I am a proud Emerge alum, and I'm honored to have the support of leaders like Senator Nancy Skinner, Assembly Member Buffy Wicks, candidate for Lieutenant Governor, my boss, Michael Tubbs, labor unions like IBEW, sprinkler fitters, NorCal carpenters, and sheet metal workers. And I am at my core a coalition builder who leads with empathy and compassion, but also with vision and lived experience, and I feel humbled and privileged to have the opportunity to bring that to Oakland as a school board member. Thank you.
Thank you both. Now, starting with Patrice, who will have our first round of questions. These questions are both from pre-selected questions and ones that have just come in from our audience. Again, you can submit questions throughout audience, just look for a little card and fill them out. They'll bring them to me to ask. All right. Starting with this first question. OUSD projects continue large budget shortfalls. How do you prioritize different ways of managing this? Starting with Patrice.
Oof. So, everyone knows the budget. It looks the way that it does, and I think part of how I approach budgets is that I don't make decisions without looking at the numbers, and so I don't have those, but I can tell you how I think about budgets. I think first, it's really important that budgets be, decisions about budgets be established based upon frameworks that reflect our values, so we don't have to wait until, I don't have to wait to see the numbers to establish in community with others what our values are and to establish a framework upon which we can make decisions about the budget. My second thing about budgets is that it's not just about what we cut, it's also about us being resourceful, maximizing and optimizing existing resources, and identifying new revenue sources. There are an abundance of local, state, and federal sources of income that I think we need to pay more attention to. And then finally, we know today that there's an $87 million deficit looming in the wing, and I want to prioritize authentically engaging with community now about some of the decisions that we'll have to make, the tough decisions that we'll have to make in order to balance our budget, and I think that that work can begin right now.
Thank you. Sasha?
Yeah. During my campaign trail, I've talked about how much I'm really concerned about the budget for various, very specific reasons. One has been the unnecessary spending of OUSD has done in the last few years, including the special elections last year, suing our teachers over rightful strikes, and many other things that we're seeing our money not going into the classroom. So my priority will be to ensure that our money really reflects the priorities of our community, and that should be fully resourced schools. I also know that we have been hit significantly, specifically in District 5, with having a direct competition with our charter schools. I would like to see Oakland where we work together to ensure that we can bring those students back to public education, because we've seen our enrollment go down over the last 20 years due to the shifts in the landscape. District 5 alone, we have 12 public schools, 11 charter schools, so we are in direct competition with some of the, some of the big charter networks. So that is one of the things that I feel like we need to shift. I also am concerned about how much we are spending in central office compared to other districts. We have about 35,000 students compared to Fresno that has 74,000 students, that has half the administration, that we do serving Title I students. So my biggest concern is that right now, our priorities are not in the classroom, it's not with students, and it's not with families. Thank you.
Thank you. And starting with you, Sasha. On that, public charter schools often get blamed for our poor student learning outcomes, budget issues, and declining enrollment, yet this does not address the reasons many, many choose other school districts, public charters, or private schools. What will you prioritize addressing at the policy and budget level to increase student learning outcomes, A to G completion, and college-going completion rates in OUSD public district schools?
We are currently not asking the right questions and asking those families, why did they leave the district? There's also a lot of misinformation about what charters mean to our community. I know from personal experience, my parents sent me to a charter school because they were misinformed about them being a continuation school. So I'm really concerned about specifically our monolingual-speaking families and our immigrant families that are being preyed by these really big networks of charters that are bringing their school, taking our students. One of the concerns that I deeply have is that if we continue down this path of not create, supporting, and strengthening our public education, is that we're gonna run out of choices, and we have, charter schools have done a really good job of fabricating this idea of choice, while overall, I feel like in a few years, we won't have choices if we continue to close our schools, because when we're talking about school closures, which is gonna be on the conversation in the next couple of weeks, we know that they're gonna come for our Black and Brown schools, because I've seen that over the last 20 years living here in Oakland. Having my schools have been personally closed and have fought with incredible individuals to keep the doors open. Thank you.
Patrice?
Yes. As it concerns increasing outcomes for students, I mean, I think the very first thing we can do is prioritize those outcomes. I think a lot of times, when you go to a school board meeting today, you hear the agenda focused on things that actually don't have anything to do with student outcomes and student learning, and part of what we need to do is make sure that's at the top of the agenda and that the community has an opportunity to weigh in on those issues. And part of that also includes data transparency. It's very clear to us what the rates of literacy and math are and how those rates vary based on demographic, geography, but more data transparency will be deeper insight into what's happening at each school campus. What programs are serving which students and how effectively are they serving students? Literacy, math, and post-secondary readiness outcomes will not increase without us actually having some rigorous amount of study and curiosity about how we can better serve our students here in Oakland. I take that very seriously. A through G completion, for instance, is something that I worked on when I worked for the mayor's office here in Oakland, and I think part of what we need to do around post-secondary readiness is engage not just the community college, the university, the CSU system, but also our trades in understanding how we can connect to students and serve all students so that A through G completion becomes not just about college, but also life overall.
Thank you. This next question will start with you, Patrice, and then go to you, Sasha. All righty. What experience do you have working collaboratively with constituents or communities or families?
Where do I begin? So this is my favorite thing about the work that I've done. I think I'm a smart person, but it doesn't really matter if you're not working in collaboration with people. There are, no great idea can be effective without community, without involvement, and part of the work that I've always done was make that my first move whenever I've gotten a job. When I was at College Track East Palo Alto, I created a student and family committee. When I got into the mayor's office, I could have very easily worked every day right here at City Hall, but I spent most of my time at the high schools that I was responsible for serving. In the work that I do now at In Poverty in California, I help facilitate listening sessions across the state, including right here in Alameda County and Oakland, so that we can better understand how people are experiencing the challenges that we are responsible for solving. Specifically, one of the things that I'm very excited about today is that as a candidate, I've actually spent a lot of time in community. The ideas that you might hear about today are ideas that I collected and generated and sort of collaborated with on with students and educators and family members across District 5, and so I'm excited to share that with you all today.
As mentioned before, I've been an advocate here in Oakland for over 20 years since I arrived here, given my own circumstances. First, I've advocated for students and families through the Dream Act that we ended up supporting to ensure that we got some level of support through the immigration process. I was actually a DACA recipient in 2013, so I led a lot of the fight around immigration issues. Some of it also translated into the work that I did directly with schools during the emergency plans development to ensure that our families knew about removal procedures during the Donald Trump administration. I've also held campaigns such as Keep Our Kids Safe, where I developed the leadership of families to be able to speak directly to their representatives. Around, as I returned to school after COVID-19, I trained, I mean, thousands of parents around getting ready for school through Bay Area Parent Leadership Action Network, Support Sanctuary City, as well as reparations. As I mentioned, I had conversations within multiple ethnic groups as well as across different languages to ensure the support of both our Yemeni families and our Latinx families in support of reparations of Black students. So I have over 10 years working directly with families here in Oakland, developing systems also for them to support their children with literacy and math at home and on the go through various museums across the Bay Area. Thank you.
All righty. Staying on this charter theme, about 25% or 1 in 4 Oakland public school students attends a charter school. What are your thoughts on charter school renewals and school choice for families? Starting with you, Sasha.
Yeah, I think that I'll recover a little bit of that. I recognize how important it is for families to choose what school they want to send their children to. I have really deep concerns from my own experience attending charter schools and seeing what charter schools are doing to our community, particularly because we are seeing our students leaving to another education system, and that's why I said that one of the priorities for our district has to be to have those conversations with our families about what pushed them to choose charter schools over public schools. It's rebuilding the trust because Oakland, and I mean, I've attended board meetings since I was 14 years old, so I've seen how demoralizing it is to see leaders not work together, seeing leaders come to our board to only emphasize a particular thing around renewals or creating new charter schools, but neglecting the rest of their responsibilities as board members. So I want to make sure that we have a holistic approach to how we are viewing our charter schools, because through the Department of Education of California, we're seeing that the rubric is very much academic-focused, but I would like for us to have more data around how they're supporting Black and Brown students, as well as how they are, they are supporting students with a special education. So I think that we need to have a holistic approach and hold them to, hold them accountable just like we do to our public education. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrice?
Yes. First, I brag about, not brag, but talk about how I've been a student of charter schools before charter schools were sexy, you know, since the 2000s, when I wrote my undergraduate thesis on them, and at that time, I saw both the promise of charter schools and sort of what we risk because of the inherent capitalist nature of charter schools, and I think we've seen that play out here in Oakland and across the country. I think the first thing I'll say about how I think about charter schools is I, as a Black woman and as a daughter of parents who really had to be scrappy trying to get us the best education, I understand why students and families flood to charter schools. I believe in the resilience of our families and want to respect their agency and their resourcefulness. As it concerns renewals, I think it's very easy, you know? We have law, and we have to follow it. There is a prescription that low, medium, high-performing charter schools have a very specific path, and there are very specific guidance that we've received in terms of how we approach renewals, given the law, and as a school board member, I respect the law. I think it's also important for me to measure how charter schools are affecting the broader landscape around funding, around school quality, around student equity across the district as well when we're making those decisions and balancing that with, with the law.
Thank you. This next question has to do with our children's literacy rates. Ensuring strong readers by 3rd grade has long been a priority in Oakland Unified and is part of the district's three-year strategic plan. Which current approaches are showing the most promise, and how would you ensure that they are continued to be built on? Starting with you, Patrice.
Starting with me, can you please repeat that robust question?
It is a robust one. It's a two-parter, people. Get it ready. All righty. Ensuring strong readers by 3rd grade has long been a priority in Oakland Unified, and it is part of the district's three-year strategic plan. First question. Which current approaches are showing the most promise? Part two. How would you build on them to ensure equitable implementation?
Thank you. The first thing I'll say is that this is the thing that keeps me up at night. I have a seven-year-old daughter, and a lot of why we chose to keep my daughter at the school she's at right now is because of how her literacy has exploded and how big of a concern that is for us at home. I think as it concerns things that are working right now, I'm hearing and I'm seeing that science-backed, evidence-backed literacy strategies are effective. In order to implement those strategies, programs have to be well-resourced. Small group learning, individualized, differentiated education is very important as it concerns literacy education, and in order to implement a science-backed approach, we have to have the resources to invest in it, which is why I said earlier, it has to be our top priority. As it concerns building upon that, I think going back to what I just said, we need to find a way to balance the budget in a way that protects and uplifts literacy as the centerpiece of our mandate, and whenever we're making decisions about what we're cutting, we need to find a way to protect literacy, and not just protect it, but find ways to pour more resources into that, and there are an abundance of community resources across Alameda County and right here in Oakland that we can employ to make sure that we both invest and pour more into literacy education.
Thank you. Sasha?
First, I just want to highlight our educators, because as I'm making my way through different schools and learning about the different initiatives that they have applying to different schools, I'm seeing specialists working directly with our students, and I am really, really deeply concerned about our budget and how this is gonna affect us long-term. I feel like we have created incredible initiatives in terms of literacy, including ethnic studies and, and other initiatives, but we haven't been able to fully implement it, because once we, we see that, that a school is becoming a full community school, it tends to be, there tends to be cuts. So I want to make sure that we continue to fund the programs that are helping, and I also want to create a way, as an initiative, when we win, hopefully this November, to really think about how we are evaluating our programs that are currently serving our students. Thank you.
Thank you both. All righty. What ideas and policy, especially policy ideas, do you have to improve the recruitment and retention of excellent OUSD teachers? This will start with you, Sasha.
Yeah. There might be a question later about school closures, but that is one of the things that it's, it has bothered me a lot, because I am a alumna from Holy Names University. That was a really strong pipeline of educators coming to Oakland, and that was another school closure that impacted my life, as I was part of the Master's Program for Urban Education in the institution here in Oakland, so that was a huge deficit. So over the last year, I've been communicating with people throughout different universities and, and thinking about how we can come together to create a pipeline that not only includes students that are in universities currently, maybe at UC Berkeley and San Francisco, but that we are also looking at, how do we create pathways in our classrooms for students who want to become teachers? How do we ensure that there's a specific way in which our students can already have that as their, as their pathway as they move through their high school years? I think that that is something that I would love to propose, especially because of our closeness to the teacher education, the Oakland Education Association. They're so close to our schools, they're always in our schools, so what better partnership than to work with OEA to ensure that we can create a pathway that they, that they support for our students to come back, because ultimately, one thing that I can tell you is that a lot of people who grew up in Oakland, who know Oakland, are so eager to come back and work in, in this city. Thank you.
Patrice?
Yes, this is very, very important. I think first about the relationship that the education team had here in the mayor's office when I was working here with the school board and the school district, and I think that there is an opportunity for there to be a stronger relationship between OUSD and the city, because something like attracting and retaining teachers here in Oakland is not just a school board issue, it is a city-wide, statewide issue, and we have to sort of engage the broader community around bigger issues like affordable housing, like public safety, to make sure that we can attract anyone to live here in Oakland and to work here in Oakland and to serve here in Oakland. I think a big part of that is continuing to do the work we're doing with OEA around wages, because if, if teachers cannot afford to live here, then that itself is a barrier. I think related to the relationships that we have with the city is also making sure that we deploy something like state law or coalition building or organizing to make sure that we tackle at the state level the barriers that make it really hard for people to, to grow up in a place and to live in a place and then to work as a teacher here in Oakland.
Thank you. And this is our last long-open question before we move into four lightning round yes or no's. I'm going to be ready to repeat this, as it is three paragraphs in index card length. All righty. Many oppose school closures, yet many of these same schools are understaffed, in poor or unsafe condition. For example, resident, rodent issues at, will not say the school's name because I don't want to get sued, lead and drinking water, broken facilities, including broken toilets. As a note, this feels quite personal. Can OUSD address the budget issues, staff vacancy issues, and poor school facility issues while keeping all of our schools open? If so, how? And if you need me to repeat that, just let me know, and I will start with, with you, Patrice.
My first answer is probably not, but I want to preface it by saying that, you know, I take schools' closures very seriously. I was teaching at a school in 2012 when the Schools District of Philadelphia closed the school where transformative, healing, liberatory education was happening. There was no reason for it, but because of financial crisis, and I'm still affected. You can't talk to a student or an educator, a family member from that school and, and not hear how we're still affected by that. So I, I take these decisions very seriously. At the same time, with the budget deficit that we have looming, I think it's important that among a host of other scenarios, we consider how we might give students across Oakland the education they deserve through a decision like school closures. I think that there is a way for us to address poor facilities and underutilized buildings and low-quality education at the same time, but I want us to think about how much more we can give our students when we open the aperture or our imaginations to including all the possibilities, the paths or the decisions that we have to make, which might include the unfortunate, that, you know, path that no one wants to see of school closures.
Thank you. Sasha, would you like me to repeat it, or are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
I believe that school closures have always been a very sensitive subject here in Oakland. I believe that school closures have always been a very sensitive subject here in Oakland, and specifically because we haven't always stressed in our leadership and how they have handled closures in the past. Usually, we get last-minute notices that prevents the community from organizing and doing whatever they can to be able to ensure that they keep their doors open. I saw two black educators in the past, some of them actually walked in my campaign, who have put their lives on the line to ensure that the doors of the schools kept open. So I've seen the school closures firsthand, I've seen the impact that it has in our community, and I don't want to see it happen again, specifically because they have never given us a long-term solution. Closing schools have not taken out of crisis. Closing schools has just continued to push students out, because like I said, for the most part, when the school closures come, we know that it's going to be impacting the black and brown schools. Now, as far as the poor facilities, one of the things that I have a challenge with is lack of leadership, especially in District Five, where I've been called to, I don't want to name any of the schools, but I've been called to be able to speak on the subject to media, to speak to families about what is going on, specifically with the lead. And it is really sad to see that nobody's showing up for that community and that I have to be, as a candidate, the one that has to translate, interpret, and support their families whose children are drinking that water.
Patrice? Would you like me to repeat the question?
I thought I answered it.
You answered it.
But I would love an opportunity to elaborate.
No, no, no. We are moving to our lightning round. All righty, these four, some of which are going to be made into yes or no's on this fly, are all lightning round questions. They will start with you Sasha, then go to Patrice, and then back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth. All right, starting with the... No. Yes. If we go over thirty seconds, I'm going to be very disappointed.
And you're starting with me, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that what you said?
All righty. Skipping this one, skipping this one. Yes or no, are there equity issues between Oakland's public charter schools and Oakland's public district schools?
Yes.
Well, we agree on that. We both agree.
All righty. Should school board members be making statements about foreign policy? Starting with Sasha.
Yes.
Yes.
All righty, starting with Patrice. Should schools limit student cellphone usage in schools?
Yes.
Yes.
And this one I have to make into a quick yes or no. Do you support, starting with Sasha, then moving to Patrice, do you support parent choice between public district schools and public charter schools?
Yes.
Yes.
And final one that we're going to make into a yes or no, because there's no way I can make this otherwise. All righty. Do you believe all schools should be dual-language schools? Starting with Patrice. And just to give you all a little caveat, thirty-two percent of OUSD students are English-language learners. That's why it's being proposed. Do you think all OUSD schools should be dual-language schools? Yes or no?
Yes.
But come back to me for elaborating. Yes.
All right. Unfortunately, and as I know, if this is unfair to people, there will be no elaborations. Sasha?
Yes.
All righty. Thank you both. I know that was a very cruel one as a former teacher to give you as the last one, but I still did it. All right, we are now going to move into your one-minute closing statements. Since we started with you Sasha, we will end with Patrice starting, and then Sasha, you will close us out. All right, go for it, Patrice.
So thank you all. As many of you know, and we've talked about today, the school district is grappling with very serious challenges, and that includes the inclining enrollment and this looming budget deficit if we don't shift course. And so I think this moment really does require new leadership, effective leadership with a track record like mine of coalition building, of leveraging local, state, and federal resources to serve students effectively and equitably. This has been my mandate for my entire career, and I'm excited about bringing that to Oakland. I am excited about the support I have from students, families, and educators across District Five to labor and state leaders like Senator Skinner and Assemblymember Wicks. And I hope that I can count on this group and the folks tuning in to support my campaign and come out and walk if you're interested in hearing more and also just being a part of the movement. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity. I am supported by the Oakland Education Association, as well as SEIU Ten to One. I also have the support of Alameda Labor Council and many other organizations that want to continue this pie for public education. I believe that over the last twenty years, living in Oakland and experiencing from school closures to strikes to all kinds of protests and all the things that we have to experience as a community have prepared me for this moment, and I hope that your vote can be that key to open the door, because a lot of the times, I work with families by the hundreds to mobilize them to those school board meetings, and we have them unable to speak and not be having a friendly face on the other side. And I'm hoping that with everybody's vote, I can get to that place where we have that door open for our families and community. Thank you so much.
Thank you both. All righty, everybody, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Oakland and all of our partners in Alameda County and community partners, I want to thank the candidates for participation today. We also want to thank the audience for coming either in person or virtually to meet the candidates and proposing thoughtful questions. Last couple of sentences, I promise. This forum will be rebroadcast on KTOP, Oakland's government access station, on Channel Ten on Xfinity Comcast, or Channel Ninety-nine on AT&amp;T U-verse. Recordings will be posted on our website, LWVOakland.org/decide, and our YouTube channel. For further information about upcoming forums, including the upcoming one on Saturday, October fifth, the candidates and ballot measures, please visit our website. We also encourage you to visit our award-winning Vote411.org personalized voter resource. You can see what will be on the specific ballots and find expanded information about the candidates and ballot measures so you can make an informed decision. The League of Women Voters do the hands-on work to defend democracy and empower voters. We will never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved with shaping important issues to keep our community strong. If you would like to be involved, we encourage that. Come join the folks helping make democracy work for everyone. It's easy to join the League, and again, we encourage you because it takes all of us. You can learn more at our website. You can also follow us on Facebook, Instagram, X, and YouTube. Look for our voter education materials, such as easy voter guides, pros and cons, and more, which are distributed both in print and online. Many are available in multiple languages. Election Day is November fifth. If you have moved, changed your name, or wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, or you don't know, please re-register. You can do this online at the Secretary of State's secure website, SOS.ca.gov. It's secure, it's easy, it's online. The deadline to register is exactly one month from the day of recording. It'll be October twenty-first, 2024. Don't wait till then. In Alameda County, every voter will be mailed a ballot. You can vote early at one of the twenty-four vote centers around Oakland, or vote by mail. Making sure that you've signed the outside of your envelope, return it via US Mail, there's no posters required, or you can drop it off at one of the many, many drop boxes throughout Oakland and Alameda County. And we encourage you all, as a final note, to please tell your friends, tell your family, tell your auntie, tell your uncle, tell your neighbor you do and don't like to vote, even the one you don't like votes account. In Alameda County, if you missed the twenty-first deadline, guess what? You haven't. It's a month away, you still got time. But if somehow, me telling you this now, for the third time, don't forget to register, and yet you have, a month later, forgotten, thank you so much for listening. But don't worry, you can register still, conditionally, and vote provisionally, in person at the Register of Voters office, or at one of the many vote centers throughout the county. It's never too late. Go to acvote.alamadacounty.ca.gov. And you don't have to do that if you do that now. Okay, thank you all for bearing with us all today, for being here today, and for supporting democracy and all of our rights to vote. This concludes our forum. Thank you. All right, KPOP, we are out.